Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting for the Portsmouth Planning Board for August 18th. We'll get right into the agenda tonight with the approval of the minutes, and I'd just like to caution the board that the approval of the minutes from July 21st are not yet ready, so we won't be approving those, but could I get a motion for approval of the minutes from the May 19th, 2011 Planning Board Meeting?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. And the second item is approval of the minutes from the June 16th, 2011 Planning Board Meeting.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. We'll now move into item two, Public Hearings. We'll begin, there's one item under Old Business. The Board's action on these matters has been deemed to be quasi-judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the Board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point or will be deemed waived. I'd like to let the Board know that Attorney Sullivan's here if there's any questions on any applications, so feel free to call on Attorney Sullivan if you have any. That being said, I'll read the only item under Old Business, the application of Henry and Jacqueline Brant owners for property located at 37 Houliway and Salmon Falls Holding LLC owners. The property located off Echo Avenue wherein preliminary and final subdivision approval for a lot line revision are requested between two lots as follows. Lot 64 is shown on assessor map 237, increasing an area from 2,728 square feet to 15,056 square feet with 241.28 feet of continuous street frontage on Echo Ave. and Houliway, and Lot 76, as shown on assessor map 237, decreasing an area from 43,703 square feet to 31,375 square feet with 200.89 feet of continuous street frontage on Houliway. Said properties are located in a single residence B district and are shown on assessor map 237 as lots 64 and 76. This application was previously denied by the Planning Board, however, the Rockingham County Superior Court subsequently reversed the Board's decision and remanded the matter for consideration of the wetlands issue and any other concerns not addressed in the Board's decision. This application was postponed at the July 21st, 2011 Planning Board Meeting. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Bernie Peelich, I'm here on behalf of Mr. Brant and his wife, and Mr. Brant is here with me also. You may recall that this was tabled at last month's meeting to obtain an opinion from the city attorney as to which ordinance applies to the subdivision application. Bob Sullivan had previously opined that it was the old zoning ordinance. I submitted that letter to you last month. He has now written a very thorough and comprehensive additional opinion letter to you, again indicating that with regard to the subdivision, the old ordinance applies. Therefore, the public hearing being closed, we would simply ask that the Board grant the subdivision since we do meet all of the requirements of the ordinance in that the wetlands ordinance, in effect prior to January 2010, had a jurisdictional minimum of one-half acre, and we have since submitted evidence, since the last hearing, that the jurisdictional wetlands are less than a half an acre and therefore no conditional use permit or buffer zone applies to these wetlands as far as the subdivision goes. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Any questions for Attorney Sullivan? Before we do it. I will open up the public hearing. If there's anybody in the public wishing to speak two-four against the application, second time, third and final time, seeing no one rise, I'll now close the public hearing. And we're looking for preliminary and final subdivision approval.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'd move preliminary and final subject to the two conditions, no, I'm sorry, the four conditions set out in the memo. I just was curious if any of them have been met. We haven't got the revised plan, have we not?
We have not received a new plan since July.
So there are condition one with five subconditions, condition two, three, and four.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion on the motion? I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to public hearings under New Business, and there's four applications. The Board's action on these matters has been deemed to be quasi-judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the Board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point or will be deemed waived. Item A, under Public Hearings, New Business, the application of Stephen and Karen Barndollar owners for property located at 120 Ridges Court for conditional use permit under section 10.1017 of the zoning ordinance for work within a tidal wetland buffer to install a 16-foot by 11-foot solar panel array to the south side of the existing garage. Said property is shown on assessor map 207 as lot 61 and lies within the single residence B district. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, John Shagnon from Ambed Engineering, here on behalf of Stephen and Karen Barndollar. This is a conditional use permit application for an 11-by-16 solar array which is proposed to be placed on the south side of the existing residence. We are here in June at your meeting for a conditional use permit for some landscaping improvements on the property, some walls, and removal of some riprap. That was approved by the Board. Since that time, the Barndollars have decided that they would like to install this solar panel at their residence. On July 26th, the Zoning Board of Adjustment approved this application. They needed relief from the front setback requirement to go the same distance as the existing house to the front property line, and that relief was granted at the ZBA. And then on August 10th, the Conservation Commission took up the issue of this conditional use permit for the solar array, and they voted to recommend approval to you folks for that. The staff recommends approval also in their memo to you folks, so I guess we're asking for your approval here tonight, and if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions for the applicant? Seeing no questions, thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. Is anybody in the public wishing to speak two-four against the application? Second time, third and final time, seeing no one rise, I'll now close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to grant the conditional use permit as requested.
Second.
Second. Discussion on the motion. Hearing now, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item B, under New Business, for public hearings, the application of Sharon R. Gross, revocable trust owner for property located at 201 and 235 Kate Street wherein preliminary and final subdivision approval for lot line revision is requested between two lots as follows. Lot 31 is shown on assessor map 163, decreasing an area from 15,252 square feet to 12,450 square feet with 158 feet of continuous street frontage on Kate Street, and Lot 32 is shown on assessor map 163, increasing an area from 15,330 square feet to 18,132 square feet with 138 feet of continuous street frontage on Kate Street. Said properties are located in a general residence A district where the minimum lot size requirement is 7,500 square feet and minimum street frontage requirement is 100 feet. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, good evening. My name is Dave Gross. My wife is the owner of the properties at 201 and 235 Kate Street. This all came about when we went for our estate planning, and in our estate planning, the property is going to be, end up being split up, and the attorney, we had a stipulation that there would have to be some sort of an easement for 201 Kate Street so there could be snow storage and access more towards the back left. And the attorney advised us that we better get that resolved before we finalize our estate planning. And the easement idea was, is optional, but its easements and private driveways and of such have been such a problem in the past that we felt that it would be better served if we deeded the property at 201 Kate Street so they would have better access to that back left for those purposes. And that's why we're here for this lot line adjustment.
Okay. Thank you.
I have my surveyor, Dave Hislop, from Knights Hill Land Surveying, if you have any technical questions about the lines.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now open up the public hearing. If there's anybody in the public wishing to speak two-four against the application, second time, third and final time, seeing no one rise, I'll now close the public hearing. Mr. Blunkett.
Could I just ask a question, I guess maybe of Rick?
Sure.
If I'm looking at this correctly, is there a curve in this new lot line? And I don't, maybe I'm not reading it correctly. I just thought that you liked, or the city liked, lot lines that were sort of at angles.
The new lot line is not curved, but is angled.
It's not, so I'm looking at something incorrectly, maybe.
I'm sorry. You are correct. You are correct. There is, it is, that's designed to get a vehicle around the corner.
Yeah, correct. So I assume obviously that's okay with the city in this instance?
It's, you know, this, these lots are so out of whack with any of our zoning, and, you know, there's nothing you can really do to make them fit our zoning. So this is, I guess, our point of view in the department is that it is what it is, and you can't, you know, you're not going to get it to fit our zoning, and this doesn't make anything worse. If anything, it makes things better in the lot adjustment between the two properties.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to waive compliance with section 6.2B of the subdivision rules and regulations to allow the lot dimensions as shown on the subdivision plan.
Okay, we'll vote on that first, and then we'll have a motion for approval, so.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye.
Then I would make a motion to grant preliminary and final subdivision approval with the following stipulations. The final plat and all resulting deeds shall be filed concurrently at the Registry of Deeds by the city or as deemed appropriate by the Planning Department. Property monuments shall be set as required by DPW prior to the filing of the plat, and number three, GIS data shall be provided to DPW in the form as required by the city.
Second.
Second. Discussion on the motion. Hearing now, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you. We'll move on to item C, under Public Hearings, the application of 30 Maplewood Avenue LLC owner for property located at 30 Maplewood Avenue requesting site plan approval to construct a one-story, 1,700-square-foot addition to an existing building with related paving, lighting, utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said property is shown on assessor map 125 as lot two and lies within the central business B district, downtown overlay district, and the historic district. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, John Shagnon from Ambed Engineering, representing 30 Maplewood Avenue LLC. And I have before you here on the Board the February 17th approval that this Board worked on. It was for doing some remodeling at the site, and this was our presented plan subsequent to the city review process. The applicant was asked to upgrade the sidewalks to brick. So looking at the new plan, you see the brick sidewalk that was included in the final approval going from the Maplewood Avenue sort of northerly end of the redevelopment area all the way around to Bridge Street. The proposal you have before you tonight is to add approximately 1,700-square-foot one-story addition on the west side of the building. Previously, it was simply remodeling, and in the process of getting tenants to fill the space and doing the remodeling, the developer became aware that some of the tenants were going to need additional space in order to fit in to the building and make it work. So the proposal is to add that space on the Bridge Street side of the building. Now, originally, we had, the access door was in this location, same place as it is now, but the sidewalk, we had proposed some sidewalk internal to the site that would bring people entering, exiting, out to the parking lot on the north side of the structure. Since we're so close to the city sidewalk, we're showing one sidewalk connection here, and then there needs to be an egress door for emergencies down here, so we're showing a small connection there. The project went through a review at the Technical Advisory Committee on August 2nd, and there were a number of stipulations. We have no issues with the stipulations except for stipulation number one. And stipulation number one is a stipulation that the developer install as a part of this phase a brick sidewalk from this point up to this point. So on the Bridge Street side of the project, the developer install a brick sidewalk at this time. As we, as you may or may not know, the property does extend to the north, and there is future, there are future plans currently at the HDC for additional buildings on the site, and we always understood that the city would like us to brick sidewalk the entire block as a part of the redevelopment, and we don't have a problem with that. It's more an issue of timing. We would like to do that, this brick sidewalk as a part of the site plan approval for the next phase. So that's why we're asking that you reconsider stipulation number one. If you aren't inclined to change stipulation number one, we would ask you to consider an amendment to the plan. If you look at the utility plan on sheet C3, one of the things that the applicant is doing is providing an area on the lot that the public service asked if we might be able to do for a switching enclosure structure that is going to service the neighborhood. So PSNH was looking for a place to land a structure in the neighborhood, and they approached us, and we said that we would provide such an area that it worked into the development plans for this lot, and that we'd be happy to do that. So you see in the northwest corner of sheet C3, a proposed switching enclosure. And part of the discussions we had with the city about this enclosure was how to feed it. The manhole that we're going to tap to feed the switching enclosure is right here on the north side of Hanover Street in front of the 30 Maplewood property. And at the time, we said to the city that we would be glad to provide this switching enclosure. We would like to service it by going down the sidewalk on Bridge Street over to the enclosure facility. As you can see, the other way is to come around to Maplewood Avenue and then come all the way around back to there. Much longer path, going to cost a lot more money, and at the time, the Public Works Department informed us that we couldn't go down Bridge Street under the sidewalk. There were some plans that were in the future. They didn't want the utility located there until they got their plans all straightened out. So if that's the case, then it seems premature to redo the sidewalk at this time, or if you're not inclined to let us review that stipulation in the next phase, we would ask that we be allowed to put the utility conduit run on the Bridge Street side. With that, all the other stipulations are fine. I'll answer any questions you might have. I look for your approval tonight.
Questions, Mr. Hopely.
John, on that same sheet C3, there seems to be two fire department connections, and I was curious if the one toward the parking lot up on the sheet, is that to be abandoned?
Correct. In the next phase, the, there will be less space between the buildings, so the fire department asked us to put a new sprinkler connection on the Bridge Street side.
Uh-huh. So would it be appropriate to add a note to the other one, to be abandoned, or is that the intent, or?
I don't know if it's going to be abandoned.
Oh, it's not?
Yeah, I think it can still be there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
At least that's my understanding.
Mr. Rice?
To quote a former Planning Board member, I'm a little confused. Just inasmuch as, this is a, have we approved the new addition before? Did that happen in March, or is this coming?
No, they went to the HDC first, and then they've come to us now.
Okay, so that was going to be my next question. Has that addition been approved by the HDC? Because I didn't catch that here.
The addition was, but I never saw a proposed transformer, or like you mentioned in the memorandum, the switching enclosure, it's not part of it. Just the structure, it's the addition.
I don't know if it was determined that that needed HDC approval?
I don't know that the, that it has been actually formally discussed anywhere, so we need to confirm that.
Right, so, and that's stipulation.
Stipulation number four.
We'll comply with that. Fine.
Yes. Just to confirm, so you're not proposing to change the switching enclosure, you're just proposing to change how it's connected to the existing manhole? Is that correct? If the sidewalk is required?
Right. If we're going to have to redo the sidewalk, we'd like to route the pipe that way because it's half the distance.
Sure.
Yeah.
Other questions for the applicant? No? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll now open up the public hearing. If there's anybody wishing to speak two-four against the application, second time, third and final time, seeing no one rise, I'll now close the public hearing.
I move to grant amended site plan approval with the stipulations in the Planning Department memo without, I guess, item number one, since I think, which is reconstruction of the sidewalk along Bridge Street, since the applicant is talking about doing that in Phase Two of the project. So that would leave four stipulations, I believe, two, three, four, and five.
I'd like to see the sidewalks going now and have them reroute. I don't know what the Board's opinion is on that, but I don't have an issue with relocating the conduit.
Just a question for this, Rick, did that get brought up at TAC concerning the routing of the underground?
It did not, but it seems reasonable. It was not proposed to us as an alternative at that point.
So we don't have a read on Public Works's desires?
This, I believe, is a PSNH issue, really. We don't, the Public Works doesn't really have an issue with, we didn't ask for, the city didn't ask for that, that switching enclosure. That's a request from PSNH, correct?
Well, I think Rick's question is more Public Works. What happened at TAC was, at the end of the meeting, after the presentation, one of the TAC members said, "So you're going to put a new sidewalk out to Bridge Street. Does that mean there's going to be a lot more traffic on the Bridge Street sidewalk?" And the answer was, "Well, you know, I guess." So then, as a part of the motions, it just came up to add stipulation one, that we put brick sidewalk in. So we didn't have the opportunity for back and forth because we didn't know it was going to come up until the end of the discussion. I don't know that Public Works may or may not have an issue with putting the conduit under the Bridge Street sidewalk. Originally, they talked about redoing Bridge Street at some point, but at the meeting, they did say that was going to be way in the future, 10 years or something. So a stipulation, if you want, could be concurring with them, that's what they want, but...
I mean, to me, it seems reasonable to go the shortest distance, but we would want to make sure that Public Works didn't have an issue with going under the sidewalk on that side versus Maplewood.
Yeah, we made it that they run the sidewalk up Bridge Street pending, you know, DPW and TAC approval, or review and approval, or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Makes sense. Can we sort of amend the motion to?
Yeah, I don't think it was ever seconded, so.
Right, good point.
Well, I'll second it with the amendment to coordinate with Public Works on the rerouting of the electrical conduit to the new public service transformer wall, or switching wall, and then coordinate that with the construction of the brick sidewalk down to that point.
Second.
Second. Discussion on the motion? No? I'll call a vote, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Okay. Well, her motion was to eliminate stipulation one, so.
No, no, it was amended by Rick.
Amended to.
Amended to include DPW review and.
So it would be to allow the conduit on that side.
To run up Bridge Street along with the new sidewalk on Bridge Street.
Okay, so we have to do the sidewalk, and if we get approval from the city, we can run the conduit there, too?
Yeah, oh yeah, put the conduit in first.
That's a good time to do it, thank you.
So Public Service won't put that in for you, huh?
Public Service won't.
Yeah. We'll move on to the last public hearing of the night, the application of 233 Vaughn Street LLC owner for property located at 233 Vaughn Street requesting amended site plan approval to eliminate the first-floor parking spaces and replace them with additional commercial space, to change the second and third floor use from office to six residential units, and to eliminate the driveway on Vaughn Street with related paving, lighting, utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. The property is shown on assessor map 124 as lot 14 and lies within the central business A district, the downtown overlay district, and the historic district. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, John Shagnon from Ambed Engineering, representing 233 Vaughn Street LLC, for you tonight for a request for an amendment to a previously approved plan. The proposal is to eliminate this first-floor parking area. This is the copy of the, a plan which was approved by the Board previously. The plan called for coming in off of Vaughn Street to a... The plan called for coming in off of Vaughan Street to a first-floor level parking area on the southeast side of the building. There's also a garage-level parking area which is accessed via Green Street. The proposal amendment is to eliminate the parking and turn that space over to more commercial space. So there won't be a driveway off of Vaughan Street. This area will be green space. You'll still have the parking underneath at the lower level and the access off of Green Street. Additionally, the application is to change the use on the second and third floors from office to residential. So there would be six additional residential units. We went to the technical advisory committee on August 2nd and received a recommendation from them, and subsequently to the parking committee on August 11th. The technical advisory committee made some good suggestions regarding parking, since we were eliminating that commercial parking or the retail parking. We are constructing sidewalk from the site out to Maplewood Avenue, and the committee wondered if the road was wide enough to allow for some parking. Currently, people do park there, so maybe more structured parking, and the city would install some meters. That would be... Would create some turnover parking for the retail use. So on August 11th, the parking committee reviewed our plan showing the off-street spaces and recommended that the issue go before the council for approval. So there would be 10 parking spaces, one handicap space, which would be located right at the access ramp to this property. Those would be metered by the city, and that would allow for some turnover parking for the retail use on the first floor. The only other stipulation that has an open question is regards to the underground electric. We relocated the approval that you gave us previously, had the electric running in Green Street to the transformer. Currently, there is a pole which is going to be removed and an underground line that feeds to that pole. That underground line still shows up on the utility plan. It's an existing line, and it's going to be abandoned with the new routing of the services to the Green Street properties. So we could put a note on the plan to be abandoned, and that would handle that stipulation question. Otherwise, we ask for your approval, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Questions for the applicant?
This... Am I right correctly? Oh, sorry. This has an extended wall, if I wrote it correctly, a landscaped retaining wall? It's been extended in the previous design?
Yes, around the front of the building on the Vaughan Street side. Yeah, this wall, we've extended it around here to provide for some planting area to soften the height of the building. Yep.
That's a structure. Would that need HDC approval?
I believe it would require. It's a modification to the previous approval, so, yeah.
And the parking garage changing to retail?
Yeah, so it would have to go back to HDC. Have you thought about that? Is that...
The facade has been to HDC.
The revised facade without the garage doors?
No, hasn't been?
No.
I think... I'm sorry, yes, the architect is scheduled for your next meeting.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Just on the utilities again, is that underground utility line, is that the only thing that is on this plan that is to be abandoned? Or what about that overhead wire that's going to the same, I think to the same pole? Is that going to be removed also?
Correct.
Maybe it's just go through, and we should just ask that you indicate on this plan all utilities to be abandoned or removed.
If it pleases the board, maybe if we just put them on a layer in the digital, so when it plots the proposed utility plan, those aren't shown.
That'd be great.
If that's acceptable.
Thank you.
Mr. Hopely?
I'm just a little confused. John, it's not the line from the new transformer to the building that's being abandoned? Is that what you're saying?
Right now, there's a line that comes out of the... There's a PSNH switching vault on the property line on the Vaughan Street side.
Okay.
And there's actually an underground run that comes around, goes over to Green Street, goes up a pole, goes overhead to another pole, and then goes underground.
Okay.
So we're going to take the... And we're going to run a new line to a transformer, two transformers. We're going to eliminate the pole-mounted transformer and eliminate the pole and have two pads to service back the building and this building across the street and...
And eliminate the intermediate pole as well? So everything will be underground?
Yes, right. Yeah, so two poles are coming down.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing. If there's anybody wishing to speak to, for, against the application, second time, third and final time seeing no one rise, I'll now close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rice?
I vote... I'd like to move that we vote to grant amended site plan approval as presented with correction to Sheet C4, utility and grading plan if necessary.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? I'll call the vote, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our new business for public hearings. We'll now go into city council referrals and requests, of which there are four items. The board's action in these matters has been deemed to be legislative in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point. When item B comes up, I'll be recusing myself and turning it over to Vice Chair Roberts. That being said, item A is a request for rezoning of land on Bartlett Street and Kate Street.
Okay, thank you. This request is for a narrow parcel of land that is mostly fronting on Kate Street with a small frontage on Bartlett Street. And this was, as noted in the memo, the subject of a variance request for a number of variances back in 2009 for a 60-unit residential apartment building. The board denied those variances, and the reasons for the denial are itemized in the memorandum. And then, following that, the planning department worked with an abutting property owner for quite a time and discussed it with the board, the possibility of rezoning several properties, all of the industrial-y zone properties in that area between Bartlett Street and the Route 1 bypass. We talked about that on and off for almost two years and perhaps more than two years. And then, in May of this year, the principal of the JAS Realty Trust, which was the applicant, withdrew the request. And at that point, the owner of this parcel, the subject parcel, had become involved in that request and wanted to move forward, and so submitted a separate request for rezoning of just this parcel. In the memorandum, I have compared the existing zoning to the requested zoning, which is mixed residence business, both under the current zoning and the proposed changes that we're going to make, we're proposing to make to that zoning district that we'll be talking about at our September 1 work session, and also with the business district. And just to sum it up, it seemed like there were two ways we could go. One is to expand the existing business district, which is essentially the abutting district, abutting district on the other side of the railroad tracks, or, and just encompasses one parcel, or we could look at this parcel in conjunction with a number of other parcels in the area and do another study and look at the possibility of rezoning to mixed residence business. And I think our feeling was, we didn't want to do a spot zoning of just rezoning one parcel to a district that there's nothing similar in the immediate area. So we either wanted to do an expansion of an abutting district or a larger rezoning. And in the interest of, really in the interest of time to help move the process along, I'm recommending that the... We recommend to the city council that they expand the business district to include this parcel. As you can see, the density, residential density that would be allowed is actually three times the residential density that is allowed currently in the mixed residence business district, but is equal to the density that would be allowed if the proposed changes are enacted. And so the result would be, in either case, that the lot would have, be allowed up to about 41 dwelling units as compared with the 60 that were proposed back in 2009, get some in the direction that they want to go. And I've discussed this with the applicant's attorney. There would seem to be no objection from that point of view. I communicated with him briefly today. And so that would be the recommendation, to recommend rezoning from industrial to business.
Do we need a motion?
We do.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we vote to recommend to the city council that the parcel at the intersection of Bartlett and Kate Street be rezoned from industrial I to business B.
Okay. Second. Second, discussion? Call the vote, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. I will hand the gavel over to Vice Chairman Roberts for item B.
This is a request from Martingale Wharf Limited Partnership regarding 99 Bow Street relative to encroachments.
And this, you... The board has a long history with this project. It was very complicated and many changes over time. But the key issue here is that as the plan, as the project was being completed and an as-built plan was submitted to the planning department and the Department of Public Works for review, we discovered that there were two small encroachments on a city property that were inadvertent. One was the replica of the original bay window. I think that when we, when the board originally reviewed this project, there was no question about whether the bay window could stay or not. It was a historic part of the project, and I don't think anybody particularly looked at whether it stuck out a few inches over city property. But in fact, it does, and the fact that it is now a new encroachment really requires us, requires the owner, really, for their own security in the future, to get an easement from the city to protect their right to have that bay window there. And the second encroachment is an underground drain line. Again, this is a small, I imagine this is a small change that was made in the field. It's again, a few inches off the face of the building, and it was not clear at the time that it was an encroachment on city property. I think that the development itself, as it's built, is consistent with everything that the planning board and the historic district commission have approved over the years, and therefore, it seems like these are appropriate to grant, for easements to be granted. And as I note in the memo, provided that the easement is granted, then I will be able to administratively approve the amendment to the site plan.
Any questions for Rick?
No questions. I'd make a motion that we recommend that the city council approve the two easements as requested.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. We've got two items left under city council referrals and requests. Item C, the request from Joseph Arberoni Family LLC regarding the acquisition of city-owned land on Constitution Avenue.
This proposal is for the city to convey to the owner of the abutting property a small tract of land that is within the curve in Constitution Avenue. At one point, when Constitution Avenue was being constructed, there was a large rock outcrop, and the road was realigned to avoid the rock outcrop, and that essentially split a parcel of city-owned land, with the majority being on the south or west side of the road, and this small wedge being on the other side, the side abutting the Baroni parcel and two other parcels. The... I've noted in this, in the memorandum, an analysis about the average assessed value of land in the area as it relates to the applicant's proposed sale price. However, that's not really the planning board's jurisdiction to determine what price the land should go for. The planning board's responsibility is simply to recommend to the city council whether or not the land should be conveyed. This seems, it seems to the planning department that this is a piece of land that really doesn't benefit the city in any way. Its benefit to the property owner is that it would provide more flexibility in site planning, in terms of setbacks and lot coverage and so forth. And in that respect, would encourage a more valuable use of the land. So my recommendation would be that the planning board vote to recommend the council approve the sale on such terms as it deems acceptable.
Make a motion if there are no questions for anybody. I'd make a motion that we vote to recommend that the city council approve the sale of the requested parcel on such terms as it deems acceptable.
Second, any discussion? Call the vote, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye as well. We'll go on to item D, the last city council referral and request, the request for rezoning 1900 Lafayette Road.
This, as you will recall, when we did the comprehensive revision of the zoning ordinance in 2009, the planning board had actually recommended that these four parcels, or six parcels, be rezoned from, at the time, general business, from Office Research to the Gateway District. But there was some concern from residents, I believe, in the abutting Alwyn Park neighborhood, primarily, that was where the concern came from, and the city council at that time elected not to move that rezoning proposal forward. Now we have a situation where there are only two undeveloped lots on the, of those six lots, and one of them is slated to be developed for an Armed Forces Reserve Center outside of any control of the city, leaving only one lot that is a vacant lot that would have to comply with this zoning district. And the zoning is fairly difficult for this area. It's been very difficult for the properties in this area to be developed. So the recommendation is, well, I guess in general, I would support the idea of rezoning to Gateway, but in this case, the person who has been requesting the rezoning is the owner of only one of the six parcels. And for that reason, I think that it would be useful for the board to schedule a public hearing for its September meeting, to give both the other property owners and the abutting neighbors an opportunity to weigh in on this. So that would be my recommendation.
Mr. Rice?
I'll wait till you close. All right, well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to schedule a public hearing on the proposed rezoning of the board's September meeting.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye as well. That'll conclude our city council referrals and requests. And last thing we have is a planning director's report before we call for adjournment.
And I have really one item. The board should know that the technical advisory committee has been asked to have a work session with the portwalk developers on the remaining parcel, which is now the municipal parking lot, at our August 30th meeting. And they're also going, requesting a work session with the historic district commission at the September meeting. And at the same time, the developer of 30 Maplewood, who we heard earlier this evening, is requesting either the fourth or fifth work session with the historic district commission for September, and the planning board and the technical advisory committee have not had an opportunity to weigh in on this at all. So what I would like to suggest, that these are both important properties that are going to be a gateway to the downtown coming in on Maplewood Avenue, and I have some concerns about some of the concepts that I've heard about. I would like to suggest, to recommend that the planning board hold a joint work session with the historic district commission on September 22nd to discuss these two properties. And I called the chair of the historic district commission today, and she was very amenable to this. She thought it was a very good idea. The 22nd is the fourth Thursday. It's our normal backup meeting night. And I think that would be very useful to have this and to have a discussion with both boards. with the historic district commission on September 22nd to discuss these two properties. And I called the chair of the historic district commission today, and she was very amenable to this. She thought it was a very good idea. The 22nd is the fourth Thursday. It's our normal backup meeting night. And I think that would be very useful to have this, and to have a discussion with both boards present of the issues around the design of these two sites.
I think it makes sense. I think it's good timing, so... Does it seem amenable with the board members?
What time, 6:00 or 7:00?
7:00. I'd like to keep it at 7:00. Yeah, I think that makes sense. Schedule a couple hours.
Yep.
So, I think that makes sense. Did you have any other items, Rick?
Just a reminder that we're also having another work session on September 1st on proposed zoning changes, and I will get you some more information on that in advance of it. You had a packet last month. I'll update that packet.
Okay. And the seating change, I think with Don's retirement, if you will, we had talked about having the arrangement based on tenure, so that's why there's some subtle changes, and basically, it goes by tenure. So, that's the reason for the seating change, not that we wanted Anthony to take Don's seat, because those are big shoes to fill.
Yeah, big shoes.
So, I think that's it. If there are any other questions, or do I have a call for adjournment?
Hold on.
Okay, good night, thank you.